The Thursday, December 13, 2018, regular meeting of the Brisbane Planning Commission will now come to order. Can I have roll call, please?
Commissioner Gomez?
Here.
Commissioner Gooding?
Here.
Commissioner Seisong?
Here.
The records show Commissioner Mackin and Commissioner Patel are absent.
Okay, the next item is the adoption of the agenda. Since we have two members missing tonight, can I have a motion to possibly remove from the agenda the workshop, item J, that was scheduled for tonight?
I make a motion to remove the workshop.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and consent calendar, there's nothing on the calendar, so next I'll move to oral communications. Is there anybody here that would like to address the commission on anything that's not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no one, I'll move on to written communications. I think there's something here from staff.
Yes, I can discuss it in the items initiated by staff.
Okay.
That's okay.
Okay, so we can move on to new business. We have two items tonight before the commission. The first is a public hearing regarding 100 Cypress Lane and its use permit, UP-6-18. The use permit is to allow an adult day program for people with developmental disabilities within the approximately 3,400 square foot office portion of the existing warehouse office building. The applicant is Nelson Gomitong. Staff, can we have a report?
Yes, thank you. Get the PowerPoint up here. Pardon me. Oh, it's the bulb. The bulb is out. Oh, okay. So do you have it on the screens there in front of you? There we go.
Yeah.
Okay. The applicant requests a use permit to utilize the existing office portion of the building at 100 Cypress Lane for an adult day program. The facility would serve as a life skills and work experience training center for developmentally disabled adults. For the purposes of the city's zoning regulations, the use constitutes an educational facility, and so a use permit is required. For this application, I'll briefly describe the site and setting, then the description of the proposed use, followed by a brief outline of the findings and staff's recommendation. Regarding the site and setting, the site is located within the Crocker Park Trade Commercial District. The area of Brisbane is characterized by large warehouse and office buildings. The site is located at the end of Cypress Lane cul-de-sac, a block north of Valley Drive. It's a long, narrow site that runs parallel with and borders the Crocker Park Trail, and given its location and surrounding topography is a relatively secluded area and it's set back from the heavier trafficked area of Valley Drive. The proposed adult day program would utilize the western, approximately 3,400 square foot portion of the building. The rest of the building is another 56,000 square feet of warehouse that's used for commercial laundry. And so this just shows just a corner of that warehouse to the right, and then the floor plan essentially would stay as is, and it's hard to read if you can read it at all, but those mostly say offices there. So the office portion of the building is currently vacant and has gone unused for several years now. Parking for the proposed use is on the western side in front of the facility. Additional parking and loading areas for the commercial laundry are located to the rear. As indicated in the agenda report, the parking for the building as a whole is non-conforming. These two images show the front parking area. The top one shows the front of the building as well, back in the distance there, and the lower one is looking to the west across Cypress Lane to the warehouse across the street. As already built out, the allocation under the current parking ordinance would be 11 spaces for the administrative office area and 56 spaces for the warehouse. That's based on ratios of one space per 300 square feet for office and one to 1,000 for the warehouse commercial laundry. The standard for schools or educational facilities is one space for each classroom and office. Applying this standard instead of the administrative office standard reduces the parking by four spaces, from 11 down to seven. So the proposed use essentially reduces the degree of non-conformity for the parking. Couple more images here shows on the top there you have the south view and the bottom is the north view. Regarding the proposed use, as I mentioned, the applicant proposes to use the existing office portion of the building as their day program for adults with developmental disabilities. Their goal is to help individuals to live as any other person would live. They would receive referrals by the Golden Gate Regional Center. This is a center that was established in the 60s as a state-funded nonprofit to serve this population. Adult day programs, as this would be, are regulated under the State Department of Social Services, which includes licensing and ongoing monitoring requirements. As mentioned, the facility would be used to provide on-the-job training and life skills training to its clients. It would serve as an office and meeting training space for staff and clients. Staff would accompany the clients then to pre-arranged work and training venues or recreational venues on the peninsula. So the facility would serve essentially as a base from which the clients would be taken to those off-site venues and a place for meeting before and after. The operational parameters were detailed in the agenda report. Just briefly, the applicant has indicated that the maximum number of clients that may be in the program at this facility would be 30. That would be limited by state licensing. However, the applicant has also indicated that the anticipated number of clients would be more likely 10, possibly up to about 20 at a time. The applicant has indicated that they will maintain a staff-to-client ratio of one to two. That's higher than the level that the state requires of one to eight. The facility would be open with regular business hours between approximately 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., but could extend into the evenings for training occasionally as well. Typically, clients would arrive in the morning between approximately 8:45 and 9:30, 8:45 a.m. and 9:30 a.m., and spend approximately half an hour to an hour in session with staff and then be brought out to the work or recreational venues. They would be brought back to the facility to debrief and return home in the early to mid-afternoon. Transportation would be provided to the clients to and from the facility via shuttle vehicles. Since this would represent a change in use, staff went out to the site with our senior building inspector to look at potential areas that might need to be addressed prior to occupancy, and so there's a condition, recommended condition of approval that addresses essentially fire protection, exiting, and possibly accessibility improvements that may need to be done before they take occupancy of the building. So there's a condition of approval for that. The findings for the Planning Commission's approval of this application were detailed in the agenda report. First, consideration is to be given to the nature and condition of adjacent uses and structures and to general plan consistency. Second, the use is not to be detrimental or injurious to those residing or working in the neighborhood, neighboring properties, or the general welfare of the city. The proposal would meet these findings, and it specifically addresses a couple general plan policies that were aimed at the city's desire to recognize the special needs of disabled individuals and foster their independence and to provide opportunities for exchanges and activities between able and disabled individuals. And this application is aimed at exactly that. Finally, I should note that the application was reviewed by the Public Works, Police, Fire, and Building Departments, and none had objections. I mentioned the Building Departments' suggested condition, and that also went along with the Fire Department's comments on the application. So in closing, staff recommends approval of use permit, UP-618, subject to the, via adoption, the resolution containing the conditions and findings. If you have any questions.
Thanks, Ken. Is there any questions? Commissioner Gomez?
I don't have any at this time.
Commissioner Gooding?
None, thank you.
I don't have any questions either, but I'd like to invite the applicant to come and speak if he would like to say something.
So we're being vended by Golden Gate Regional Center. We're granted this project to serve the people with developmental disability. I've been in the business for 15 years and have been serving them, and I think it's a great opportunity for them to learn and to be a meaningful, productive part of the community. And that's why we're trying to try to get this site, because I've been looking all around and it's been hard for us. And I hope that this would get approved so they could have something to look forward to. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? I see no one can have a motion for us to close the public hearing.
I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, if you want to start the discussion, I don't know if there is any.
Yeah, my only comment is that I think it's a noble use of the space, and it hits on our recreation and community service elements here, which are outlined, and thank you, staff, for identifying that. So I think it's a great project.
Commissioner Gooding?
Yeah, I have no further questions.
Yes, you know, I think this program would be good for the city, and I think it's doing, you know, good work. So, you know, I'll take a motion to, for us to approve the use permit.
So moved.
All in favor? Or second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, our next, the next item on our agenda is a public hearing on 101 South Hill Drive, use permit, UP-8-18. Staff, can we have a report?
Good evening, commission. So the requested permit is a use permit to operate a cannabis retail delivery, distribution, and light manufacturing facility occupying about half of the existing 15,000 square foot vacant office warehouse building at 111 South Hill Drive. As you know, our cannabis business regulations require a use permit prior to operating any cannabis business in the Crocker Park District. So to orient you to the site, this should be very familiar because you guys just approved a use permit at the front building on this property at 101. So we're now at 111, which is the farthest building away from South Hill at the rear of the property, and adjacent to those properties, as you know, are other established manufacturing, office, distribution uses on that block of South Hill. So moving on to the actual site itself, so again, this is the rear building, shown in gray here on the site plan. The front building, we actually just had the grand opening for the cannabis business occupying the front building this week. So Cleve is operational, so this business would be the second business to operate in In regards to parking, they've indicated in shading on their site plan the spots that are available to them in their lease. I'll note that there are many more parking spaces on the property, so this particular owner has kind of apportioned them out to individual tenants. But the 25 spaces that are available do exceed by one space the minimum number of parking spaces required based on the floor plan and intended use of the building. So they have more than the minimum required parking. Truck access, obviously from South Hill Drive going back to the currently one loading area at the rear south side of the building, loading dock, so they would utilize that existing So in terms of the actual use itself, as you could see from the attached business operations plan attached to your agenda report, the operations would consist of distribution, which is receiving and transporting of goods between licensed commercial entities, and as described in their business plan, they estimate there would be one delivery trip per day for distribution with small commercial vehicles, at least to start, and as well as the delivery operations, which is delivery of products directly to the consumer. That would be about 10 delivery drivers working in shifts to start, as described in their operations plan. And then the manufacturing branch of the business would include infusion and formulation of beverages, topicals, and other products, bottling and labeling. No extraction is proposed. And also in the operations plan, and I think the applicant will touch on this in their presentation to you, they are intending to sublease, so they're occupying half of this building. So they've identified, as you saw in the plans attached to your agenda report, two sublease areas. So they're looking to lease out to other cannabis businesses. We have at least one business that submitted an application, not timely enough to get it on tonight's agenda, unfortunately, but a retail delivery business. And we'll look forward to seeing who else they intend to sublease with. Those future subleases are not included in this use permit. So once they actually, you know, identify a sublease business, they would have to submit a use permit application to the city prior to operating. The operations plan describes their kind of startup in terms of employees, so at least in the first six months, they're estimating about 31 employees for operations. Again, employees would work in shifts to ensure parking is available on-site. They have also committed to joining the commute.org shuttle program among other efforts to incentivize employees to use other modes of transportation to access the property. So considering the requested use permit, of course, you have to consider the adjacent uses and structures. So again, as we kind of discussed, last use permit for this site, the surrounding uses are all occupied in established distribution, primarily distribution on both sides of this property, as well as office and warehousing businesses and some manufacturing as well. In terms of compatibility with adjacent uses, so all the physical and operational security measures for this site, as you know, are all subject to the Police Department's oversight and discretion, and the Police Department has reviewed this application, and the applicant submitted a separate and more detailed security operations plan to police, which met police's standards. And of course, our typical condition of approval has been added, requiring that prior to starting operations, that police inspects the site to make sure that all the required security has been installed. In regards to general plan consistency, so as you know, the Crocker Park land use area allows a mix of commercial uses, which this proposed use would fall right into those allowed uses. And then when we look at the actual general plan policies applicable to a business like this, they demonstrate consistency with those as well. And when it comes to compatibility, not being detrimental to the health, safety, comfort, and general welfare, again, the use is compatible with existing uses on the property and in surrounding properties. Their operations plan details tools and strategies that they'll use to minimize potential impacts, particularly related to order management, you know, using the kind of best available technology for scrubbers and ventilation systems, et cetera. And given the conditions of approval, we feel that that finding could be met. And I'll emphasize again that this application was reviewed by police, also North County Fire, our Building Department, Public Works, and they have all recommended conditions of approval that are attached to the resolution, just to make sure that the operations of this business will not trigger any concerns on their end. So we are recommending conditional approval of the permit, subject to the findings and conditions of approval contained in Exhibit A to the resolution. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Julia. Any questions? Commissioner Gooding?
Just a couple about parking. Can you go back to the diagram of the lot, please? Did you say, if I understood correctly, that this is oriented north-south, that the west or southwestern parking spaces are committed or accounted for by the landlord to others?
That's our understanding, that while there's two other tenant spaces in this building, so my impression is that when those tenants signed, you know, signed future leases, assuming they get a use permit, that then they would also be allotted additional parking. So this particular applicant is occupying a portion of the building, so they've been apportioned in their lease a certain amount of parking spaces. Obviously, our code is a little more black and white. We look at how many spaces are on-site compared to the use that's being conducted. The staff report referenced the leased spaces, just because, you know, it's still in excess of the minimum requirement. You know, obviously, we might have different conditions of approval should they have been given only a certain number of spaces in their lease that were less than what was required, but is that clarified?
Yeah, thank you. So my question, and it may be for the applicant rather than you, feel free to tell me that, is if you take into account the employees parking there and the delivery vehicles stowed there or presumably stored there on a, whenever they're not out on deliveries, you know, are they going to be overpacking the spaces that are allotted?
I think the applicant's plan for employees that would be actually there full-time at the facility would be, again, to kind of stagger their schedules. They can probably speak to that a little bit more. But again, there is an abundance of parking on this site. It's pretty rare in Crocker that we have so much parking on one property.
Yeah. That's why I was asking about, you know, who the other spaces belong, you know, belong to or allocated to.
Right.
I've been there, there's a lot of parking, but when I was there and these buildings were empty, there were a bunch of cars parked there that I attributed to, I think, the property to the west of this, and presumably their employees or something. So that's, maybe they can speak to that as well. You know, now that we have both buildings occupied, it's conceivably an issue.
Commissioner Gomez?
Yeah, I didn't, I went out there, seemed like it's a pretty large parking lot, so that didn't really come up, Commissioner Gooding, but I can see how, you know, we want to make sure we exercise due diligence. No, I mean, I guess the only observation just generally is it looks like that's going to be a cannabis corridor with the other businesses, so very interesting development. And yeah, that's all I got. So thank you, staff.
Thank you. So we'll open the public hearing now. Would the applicant like to speak, please?
Thank you. So first of all, Madam Vice Chair, commissioners, thank you for taking the time to allow us to present today. Before we start our presentation, I'd actually like to make a clarification about the parking issue. We actually recently entered into an amendment to our lease with the landlord providing us with 10 additional parking spaces. I apologize if that wasn't shared with the city thus far, something that happened very recently. And parking is something that I'll be speaking to more in our presentation. So we're here today, sorry, yes, so we're here today to present a proposal for cannabis distribution and manufacturing operations to be conducted by Peninsula Distribution Solutions LLC, and cannabis delivery operations to be conducted by Peninsula Delivery Solutions LLC. Both of these companies are subsidiaries of MGIC Inc., which is our parent company. MGIC currently has over 200 individual shareholders, and during the application process, we shared with the City of Brisbane the names and shareholdings of each of these individual owners. My name is Dimitri Gordachev, and I'm the Chief Operating Officer of MGIC and the Secretary of Peninsula Distribution and Delivery Solutions. Presenting with me today is my colleague, Ilan Ray. He heads up our regulated cannabis operations, and he is the President of Peninsula Distribution and Delivery Solutions. MGIC was founded in 2014 with the goal of pairing skillsets from traditional industries with professionals that have deep-rooted cannabis expertise. Ilan and I are a great example of how those two worlds have come together at MGIC. My background is primarily in finance and investment banking, and I entered the cannabis industry in 2016 when I joined MGIC. Ilan, on the other hand, has been a fixture in the cannabis industry for over 10 years. He was a founding member at Harborside, which is one of the longest-standing dispensaries in the country, based in Oakland. MGIC currently has about 75 employees across the company, and that's a number that's growing rapidly. Our main focus is cannabis distribution and delivery, and manufacturing is an extension of our distribution capabilities, and in Brisbane it will be limited to very specific activities. And to be clear, we do not engage in any cannabis cultivation, extraction, or refinement activities. I'd like to take a moment to tell you about our core values and goals as a company. As a distribution and delivery company, we believe we've been entrusted with a very important responsibility, which is to ensure that the cannabis products that make it into the hands of the consumer are of the highest safety, quality, and consistency. We facilitate compliant cannabis commerce by servicing legal businesses throughout the supply chain, from the cultivators that grow the plant to the manufacturers that produce products, and to the retailers that put those products into the hands of consumers. We work with companies, both large and small, whether our distribution clients are firmly established or just starting out. As long as they do things the right way, we provide them with an equal opportunity to get their products to market. We're driven by a strict adherence to regulatory compliance. All of our operations are fully licensed at the state and municipal levels. We don't do business with any unlicensed operators, and we have an internal compliance team that oversees the compliance of our operations and also helps third-party operators to achieve and maintain compliance. And one of our goals is to be a leading force in professionalizing the cannabis industry and adding value to local communities, and we do that by engaging in ethical business practices, forming long-term business partnerships, taking every opportunity to work with local businesses, and working closely with local authorities to ensure the safety of our employees, contractors, customers, neighbors, and the local community at large. In terms of where we currently operate, our corporate headquarters is located in Commerce, which is just outside of downtown Los Angeles. On the operational side, we're building a statewide network of fully licensed distribution and delivery centers. We currently have a distribution facility in Coachella and a delivery and distribution facility in Oakland, both of which are fully licensed at the state and municipal levels. We also have a distribution facility in Long Beach and a delivery facility in Sacramento, which are both pending licensing. And lastly, we have a satellite office in San Diego, which serves as a central command center that oversees all of our statewide delivery operations. And all of this brings us to Brisbane, where we hope to be a good neighbor to surrounding businesses and to have a positive influence on the local community. We've leased a 16,000 square foot facility in Crocker Park with an allocation of 35 exclusive parking spaces. Our facility is located at the back of our site with minimal visibility from the street. Our facility is in excellent condition. It's naturally subdivided to accommodate multiple operations, and it requires relatively minimal improvement. In preparing our application, we worked with City of Brisbane departments, including the Police Department, to ensure that our proposed improvement program will allow us to comply with all our regulations, maximize the security of our operations, provide our employees with the best possible working environment, and meet all conditions of approval. And if our CUP is approved, we will continue to work with the city to ensure that our improvement program is implemented in accordance with all city development guidelines and codes. In Brisbane, we're proposing to establish three types of operations, all of which factor into our vision and strategy as a company. The first is a distribution center. The first is a distribution center that will allow us to support the needs of legal cannabis businesses operating in the broader peninsula area, and will serve as a key component in our statewide distribution network. The second is a manufacturing facility that will allow us to provide a broader suite of services to our distribution clients, including packaging, labeling, and bottling, and will not include any extraction and refinement activities. And the third is a delivery operation that will allow us to serve medical and adult-use consumers in Brisbane and surrounding cities that allow cannabis consumption and delivery. And before completing any delivery orders, we verify the eligibility of our customers to actually purchase cannabis products. So before I dive in, deeper into our operations, I'd like to take a moment to discuss the sublease that we recently entered with a company called NorCal Cannabis Company. As Julia mentioned, our operations will not require the use of our entire facility, so we've subleased a portion of the facility to NorCal. NorCal is a company that's completely unrelated from MGIC, but it's one that we've come to know in recent months and have a lot of respect for as a leading cannabis operator in Northern California. NorCal is applying for a separate CUP to conduct cannabis delivery operations at the facility, and like us, they will not engage in any cultivation, extraction, or refinement activities. And over the following weeks, we'll be coordinating with NorCal to review their proposed improvement activities with the goal of maximizing the security of our entire facility. In terms of security, I'd like to reiterate that our top priority is safety. We implement exhaustive and, in some cases, redundant security measures to reduce the risk of any incidents. Some of these security measures include 24-hour security, video surveillance of our entire facility, third-party security on-site at all times, a comprehensive alarm system, physical barriers such as steel doors and commercial-grade locks. Our entire facility is a limited access area, which means that it's accessible only by authorized personnel, and we require multiple-step authentication to enter the facility, including ID cards, key codes, and a fingerprint scan. Additionally, we implement a series of centralized and operational security measures, and those include central off-site monitoring of all of our facilities, GPS-enabled tracking and inventory systems that comply with all track-and-trace protocols, secured Sally ports and mantraps for all loading and unloading activities, which are accompanied by security at all times. And our distribution vehicles are equipped with cameras, GPS security cages, and drop safes. And our delivery vehicles are equipped with GPS and secure opaque containers to carry cash and cannabis products. In terms of the visibility of our operations, our goal is to ensure that there's no indication from the exterior of our facility or our transportation vehicles as to the nature of our activities. We will not advertise our name or operations in any way on or at the facility. We'll use measures to reduce the visibility of our operations, including windows covered in frosted film and Sally port fencing covered in opaque mesh. And all of our distribution and delivery vehicles will be unmarked and discreet, with no indication that they are carrying cash or cannabis products. In terms of cash management, our operating procedures are aimed at minimizing the amount of cash that's stored on-site. Any cash that is stored on-site is held in secure safes located in each individual operation, with only authorized personnel having access to these safes. In terms of distribution and manufacturing, the majority of transactions are settled by wire transfer check, which minimizes the amount of cash held on-hand at the facility. And in terms of delivery, most of our orders are settled in cash, but our drivers are allowed to have a maximum combined value of $2,000 of cash and cannabis products in their vehicle at any given time. And in the rare occasion that a delivery driver, or that a delivery order in excess of $1,000 is placed, the driver will return to the facility immediately after making that delivery. Any cash transactions that do take place at our facility occur in secured areas, are overseen by security personnel, and are monitored by surveillance cameras at all times. I'd also like to touch on a few more key components of our operations. In terms of distribution and manufacturing, our proposed hours of operation are Monday through Friday, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and there will be, there will be no loading and unloading activities on-site during non-operating hours. Our distribution vehicles are unmarked vans. We don't use any large trucks in our distribution operations. Our on-site traffic will be minimal. On average, we're expecting a maximum of one to two drop-offs and pickups per day. And we use se, secured Sally ports located in the very back of the building to obscure all loading and unloading activities from public view. Our distribution vehicles that are not in use are kept off-site at a secured storage In terms of delivery operations, we understand that there's a pending ordinance to modify the allowable operating hours for delivery. At the moment, we intend for our delivery operations to operate during the hours allowed by the City of Brisbane. Our delivery vehicles will be unmarked personal vehicles, and to minimize on-site traffic, we employ a slightly different operating model than most delivery companies. At the beginning of each shift, our drivers pick up cannabis product at the property. They then patrol a certain geographic area while waiting for orders to be routed to them, and they only return to the site when they're running low on certain products, when they're carrying an amount of cash that approaches the $2,000 limit that we've set, if they go 30 minutes without receiving an order, or at the end of their shift. And after returning to the facility, drivers only spend a few minutes at most parked on-site, and at no time will cash or cannabis products be left unattended in a delivery vehicle. In terms of odor mitigation, this is something that's key to our goal of being a good neighbor and maximizing the security of our operations and creating an optimal work environment for our employees. Our operations do not include any cultivation, extraction, or refinement, which are the activities that typically generate the most amount of cannabis odor. And we'll incorporate into our HVAC systems across the facility air filters that eliminate odor and airborne particles and reduce energy costs and waste. And from a waste management standpoint, our goal is to have the lowest carbon footprint possible, and we'll institute policies to minimize the amount of office and cannabis waste we produce. Because we won't be engaging in extraction or refinement activities at the facility, our operations will not include the use of any harsh or volatile chemicals, and we won't produce any chemical waste. In each of our operations, we'll have a secured area dedicated for cannabis waste and destruction and disposal. And we're working with South San Francisco Scavenger Company to develop and implement waste protocols that will comply with all regulations. And those protocols will result in cannabis waste that is completely unusable and unrecognizable from both a visibility and an odor standpoint, and will obtain certificates of destruction to confirm that all waste, all cannabis waste has been destroyed and disposed of properly. That concludes our presentation. Thank you again for taking the time to present this evening, and be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Commissioner Gomez?
Well, thank you for the presentation. Now, that was very thorough, and a few slides before you addressed some of the concerns that have been brought up in previous discussions with other applicants, area odors, security concerns. It seems pretty drum-tight to me that you guys know what you're doing. I, yeah, I can't really find anything to dig into at this point.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gooding?
Yeah, thank you. Can you describe again a little bit of detail about the, the delivery vehicles, the actual delivery to the customers? Are this like private vehicles of your employees?
Sure, so the, yeah, the delivery drivers use their own personal vehicles.
I would just add that those vehicles have to meet a rigid set of standards set forth by our SOPs, our internal SOPs, so, and not just any vehicle that the driver chooses to use, they obviously have to be of good standing, of a certain condition, operating condition, you know, no observable-
Sorry, Ilan, would you mind talking to the mics?
No observable markings or graffiti or, or, you know, stickers that identify them as cannabis users or anything of that nature. This is something that we're pretty clear on. It's, it's much like a, like Uber does with their vehicles.
It's Uber for cannabis delivery.
Exactly. And, and obviously, they carry a, an additional type of insurance, which is required as well.
Right. And how, this is not about land use particularly, but I'm just morbidly curious, how does the customer, is there an app for this?
Yeah, we have a comprehensive website that's available to the consumer, and then there'll be a, a phone service where they can call in to speak to an individual in person to both identify and clarify the uses and types of products that they're ordering, as well as to clarify the delivery times and any other information that's necessary to make it a smooth run.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's where our satellite office in San Diego comes into play. That's kind of a central command center and call center for all incoming calls, and it also provides customer service for all of those customers.
So that the white vans that were shown in a, in a slide are, are the vehicles delivering the, the product to your facility for subsequent-
Right, those, those are the vehicles in connection with the distribution and manufacturing operations, so they carry a larger amount of cannabis. And, and delivery vehicles, obviously, again, our limits are set at $2,000 of combined value.
And those are not stored or parked on-site?
Correct, so, a, again, our drivers will come, come to the site in the morning, pick up product, and then they'll return in any of the kind of conditions that I met, that I mentioned earlier. And at the end of the shift, they'll come back to the site, drop off any additional cannabis products and cash, and then they'll leave for the day. So there's no, no cars parked overnight.
And, you, you mentioned, or someone mentioned, 31 employees in several shifts. This is about parking. This is my bugaboo, to make sure that we're not spilling over into the street. How many employees per shift and how many cars per shift anticipate?
So it depends on the position. I think in terms of the distribution and manufacturing uses, it'll be somewhere between 10 to 15, and then there'll be a few more members of staff for the delivery use. And again, the delivery drivers make up the, kind of the majority of the employees on the delivery side, and they won't be, you know, parked at the facility during operating hours. They'll just kind of drop by when they need to either pick up product or drop off product, and they'll be at the site for usually no more than five minutes or so.
And then they go orbit wherever they do?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
I have a couple of questions. Now, you say you also deal in cash transactions, so what is the max cash amount, like, per customer?
So the typical order is, averages about $75 to $80.
Okay.
And each driver processes about five to seven orders per day on average.
And you've been, you said you've been in the business for over 10 years, correct?
Yeah, it's almost 15 now, yeah.
Okay. Have you ever had any incidents between, you know, the, the driver or the customer in dealing with cash transactions?
So, as Dmitry mentioned, I was a co-founder of Harborside Health Center in Oakland, which is actually in the eastern part of Oakland. We had on excess of, in excess of over $100,000 in cash transactions a day, and I'm proud to say that in over 10 years of operation that I was a part of the team, we did not have a single incident. And that's due to very, very comprehensive on-site security measures, as well as very solid SOPs internally to minimize the amount of cash that's ever exposed. So any type of casing of the joint would have very little to work with, so. And, and I would like to point out that this particular operation is, you know, we are intent to hopefully weather the storm of the inability to do transactions the way most businesses do, which is through electronic fund transfer. And in the meantime, the cash transactions are limited to the drivers and will be limited to the numbers that Dmitry outlined, so.
And, and we're constantly looking for cashless payment systems. Again, compliance is one of the things that we're, is really a hallmark of our operations, and thus far, we just have not been able to find a solution that's fully compliant.
Okay. And on the issue of security, are all of your employees, are background checks done on them?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, I think that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else here want to speak, address the commission? Nope. Then can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's discuss. Anybody have anything else to say on this? Commissioner Gooding?
No, I, I don't. As I mentioned, thank you for the presentation. I, I think that the areas that were in my mind were, have been addressed, and I think we're in a situation where we've got one operational, we'll have another, and I think it's going to be, observationally, what's the impact? It seems, it seems like these are well-thought-out plans, and that all the Ts have been crossed and Is have dotted, and these are professionals, and I can tell, you know, so, I, I don't have anything else to add.
Yeah, I think if I count right, this is either the, counting their sublease, either the third and fourth, or the second and third businesses like this, and I, I think it merits, you know, keeping an eye on how these go and how smoothly they go. But it appears to me that the, the application meets the, the terms of the applicable rules and statutes, and I have no, no concrete objection.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, and I would just comment that I, you're the third applicant, cannabis delivery applicant before us, and, you know, I have to really commend you on the thorough presentation, like Commissioner Gomez said, you, I think you've really thought out, thought everything out, so, yeah, so I, you know, thank you for your presentation, and I think we'll just go on to the vote then. So can I have a motion to approve the use permit?
I make a motion to approve use permit UP-818.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is items initiated by staff.
Yes, just a couple of things. One, on this flyer you have, it's kind of a save-the-date sort of thing for your reference. The local planning directors in San Mateo County and along with this other group called 21 Elements, which is another county-wide consortium, have been looking at some opportunities to provide some training to planning commissioners countywide. So we came up with these two particular dates, and there'll be some more information in terms of the actual agendas and what materials they plan to cover. I think it'd be a really good opportunity for you to learn from your peers and maybe get some more perspective on what you do on your particular seat on the dais, and certainly encourage you to participate if you can. So that's that. Just to follow up, the last meeting, you reviewed and approved that Phase III, the R and D campus, that appeal period came and went without any sort of appeal being filed, so that approval is final, and so we look forward to them moving forward in a timely fashion toward construction, as they indicated. And then, lastly, you may have heard that the, the county registrar voters, the, did certify the results of Measure JJ, and it did pass, so that's sort of in the books now for amending the city's general plan, so. If that, I'd take any questions, but otherwise, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just a quick question. John, should we, should we expect, like, a series of these types of workshops next year, or is this something where?
Well, they're, they're starting out with two, right, and they may do two more.
Like, historically, I guess, I'm trying to understand.
Oh, no, this is a totally new-
This is new, new?
Yeah, this is absolutely a new program.
Okay.
Never been done before.
Oh, okay.
And this is a silly question, but are, are these free?
Yes. And you get a free meal out of them, too. Not only free, but dinner, dinner and a show.
There's no such thing as a free meal.
Free dinner.
Okay, thank you. So items initiated by the commission, is there any? Seeing none, I will-
Just a quick note, Ken, did, did we, at, at some point, do we want to, do we want to bring up, I know it's through OSEC, so maybe it won't touch it, but the tree ordinance discussion, did, did, did we want to bring that back to the commission, or was that more on the?
So it'll, it'll come, so once I, we're in the stage of gathering your comments-
Yes.
-still, and what I'll do is I'll, I'll push that back out to you for, to decide essentially whether we want to reconvene and, and hammer out any last issues.
Okay. I've been re-
But it's, right, it's a combination, it's, the subcommittee is both OSEC and Planning Commission. You have your, your equal parts in it, and so, once we have that draft document ready to go on to city- And so, once we have that, uh, draft document ready to go on to City Council, we'll bring it to both Planning Commission and to OSEC, um, just as an informational item. And each of those bodies could add whatever comments, if they see fit, that they might want to send on to the, um, City Council. If they don't have any, anything to add, then it would just go on to City Council as it is.
Okay.
But, but I, I'm thinking that we'll be, we're coming into the holidays, I'm still gathering your comments, and so we'll, we'll be looking at early next year to, um-
I need a deadline, uh, for me, because I, I've, I've been digesting parts of it. I don't have any substantive feedback that I've been able to, so, give me a deadline. That's, that's what I'm asking for.
Okay, so we'll, we'll talk off, offline about that. I, I have Doug's and I have Barbara's already, so, yeah. Thank you.
I know, I'm, I'm, there you go.
Okay, so-
Can I squeeze in one more, sorry?
Yes.
Um, we had the council to adopt the, um, mobile home park rezoning ordinance as well as the, uh, cannabis retail delivery hours extension ordinance. So that will be, both will be in effect in, uh, early January with our thirty-day.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, and I guess we, um, the workshop we were going to have tonight, the overview of the adopted general plan, we've agreed to calen- calendar that for a different date. So, um, before I conclude, I just want to mention that, um, the commission's, um, decisions tonight may be appealed, um, to the City Council. So, um, appeals should be filed with the city clerk, no later than fifteen calendar days following the Planning Commission's decision. And with that, um, can I have a motion to adjourn our meeting to the next, uh, regular meeting of Thursday, January tenth, two thousand-
Oh, through the, through the chair, I just want to, I apologize, but I know the appeals procedure is a little wordy. Uh, actually, the appeal period for use permits is six calendar days. I'm sorry for that.
Thank you.
Fusion, so.
Thank you, okay, I should have read the whole thing, I guess. Okay, um, okay, so can I have a motion to adjourn to our next regular meeting of Thursday, January tenth, two thousand nineteen?
I'll move to adjourn.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.